Third officer is here.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Oh, they did.
Of course, I literally have it out. Oh, I said I've never been here before.
We're ready to go.
Good evening. It's my honor to call the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors' final meeting of 2017 to order. And if we could, as always, begin with a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
President Oshka.
Present.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here.
And is Director Wenskill excused?
Yes, she's excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item number four, we have two oaths of office to perform tonight. And first on the agenda is Director Karen Viall. I don't...
Judge Cutherson is coming to swear me in. And if it's all right, I'm going to ask my... This is my grandson Abel, who already wants to be on the school board.
Okay, that's good.
My grandson Roman is out here with my...
Might as well. Yeah, come on up. Hello. So anyway, before we... I administer the oath, I just want to say how honored I am to be invited by former Mayor Viall to swear her in tonight and have her family here today. It's also an honor to be here because of the great work the whole district has done and you've done as a member with the graduation rates and all the other stuff. And I know Superintendent Santoro talks about it all the time. So again, congratulations. And at this time, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Karen Viall...
I, Karen Viall...
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm...
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties...
And will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of Director...
Of Director...
Of Tacoma School District Number Ten...
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number Ten.
Pierce County...
Pierce County.
State of Washington...
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Craig, thanks.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. There you go. And she has the call, has the original.
She does.
Yes.
Thank you. Before my family leaves, I'd like to introduce them. And I want to thank Judge Cutherson for being here. He was our first African-American Superior Court Judge here in Pierce County and has been a very dear and revered friend of mine for many, many years. Thank you, Your Honor, for being here. Thank you. I want to introduce my husband Marvin, who has been... We will have been married forty-eight years next week. And... Forty-eight. Marvin forgot. It's a good thing I reminded him. Next week, yeah. Next week. But one does not do this work without having a great family and a great support. Roman is excited, you know. Roman is the oldest of our... Of our two grandchildren here. And Abel is the youngest. And next fall, Roman will start preschool. And he will be the fifth generation of our immediate family to attend Tacoma Public Schools. So we're happy about that. And my... We have... We have three sons, Marvin, Craig, and Robert. And this is Craig, our middle son, who is a Foss graduate. And our... My wonderful, beautiful daughter-in-law Anna is a Stadium graduate. And we're just so blessed to have him here and support. Some of you know that I had a bit of a health crisis last summer. And I want you to tell you here that I am well and ready to go. But I would not have... Have been able to do that without my family. So thank every... The voters of the... Shh. Abel, what's up, dude? Come on. Come here. Just let him down, honey. There, buddy. Yeah, come on. You can... You just walk around so you don't create a havoc. So hopefully, there are no kindergarten teachers here in the room who are thinking, "We won't have these kids at school." But I'm just kidding. Anna, he's fine. Scott, he just want... He wants... Yeah. Okay. So anyway, I want to thank the voters of the Tacoma Public Schools for retraining me for another six years. It's been an amazing experience to be a part of this team up here and all the things that we have accomplished. But we still have an awful lot of work to do. And I look forward to continuing to help move the school district forward and to making sure each and every one of our children walk across that stage and receive a high school diploma. Thank you very much.
Just want to take a moment to offer our thanks to Director Viall for running again and making a commitment to serve the community for another six years. It's a huge commitment. And we're glad to have her on board. And with that, we're going to move on to our next oath of office, which is the return of none other than Director Scott Heinz.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my wife Amy and my son Sam, my son Max and my daughter Charlotte, the third one. They were eight, five, and three when I won the first time. So I've asked them to do the oath. Are you starting to administer the oath?
Well, it looks like...
Okay.
Cool.
I, Scott Heinz, do hereby solemnly swear...
I, Scott Heinz, do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties...
And will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number Ten.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number Ten.
Pierce County State of Washington.
Pierce County State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
And I also want to recognize my parents. Dave and Margaret Heinz are in the front row. So hey, don't run away. Where are you going? They're like, "We're out of here." Cookies in the back. And I won't be long. But I do want to thank my parents. I'm an only child. And I appreciate the way that you raised me so that I could be in a position to serve my community. That's something that I learned from you. And I appreciate, Amy, this is a time-intensive responsibility. And there are a lot of nights where I'm doing things that are school-related and you're keeping things going. So I appreciate all of your love and support. And I've got an eighth grader and a fifth grader and a fourth grader. So you're a part of the reason that I do the work. It's honored to have been re-elected. We have come a long way. The year before I ran, the graduation rate was fifty-five percent. And there were some serious issues with what was going on within the school district. And I think the board and the superintendent with her leadership and the deputy superintendent and the entire team and the community have really banded together to create a world-class school district. And there's a lot of work to be done. But we've accomplished so much in the last six years. And I'm just grateful to have been a part of it. So thank you.
And Director Heinz, also on behalf of the board and the community, thank you so much for your commitment, your continuing commitment to Tacoma Public Schools. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is Director resignation, and that would be me. So before I ask you to accept my resignation, I've got a few words for you. And I'm going to go down there because I want to talk to you and not back up. All right. So how do you put eight years of what we've done together into any kind of words that are meaningful and lasting? I don't know. So I'm going to get a little philosophical on you. Each of you have before you a glass candy cane. It's from Hilltop Artists. And first of all, I want you to know that that's a tradition in my family that I've done for about a decade. So my family members and my close friends get a piece of glass because it's about community and partnership and transformation. It's a candy cane, right? This is a bittersweet thing for me to lead the school board. And so it's sweet because it's candy cane. It's bittersweet because it's glass. Please don't eat it. So now I'm going to get really philosophical for a second, so bear with me. So it's glass, right? And glass is made of sand. And I imagine that every grain of sand at one time was probably a mountain, right? But there were volcanoes and explosions and raging oceans, human construction, along with all sorts of other unprecedented, unknown, unplanned-for events. And yet, the mountains still had to be a rock and move and move and move and become rocks, right? And then eventually, the rocks became sand. It had to come together under intense heat with the clear vision of an artist and meld together to transform into something beautiful that previously didn't exist. That's what's sitting before you. And I think that in so many ways, that's what we do as school board directors, is we create... Take little bits of sand, and we have intense heat and discussion. We have all sorts of unpredictable things. But man, we make things happen. And that's really cool. I get to take that with me. So it's a token of my gratitude. It's something that I'll hold as a memory, and I hope that you will too. I love and respect each and every one of you. And I have no doubt that in my absence, the leadership of the district is strong and will continue to serve our community well. And with that, I hereby humbly ask that you accept my resignation of Director of Tacoma Public Schools. And if so accepted, I'll pass the gavel.
So, Mr. Truban, there's not a vote, correct?
Right, correct. So there's no vote needed. The board simply needs to acknowledge and accept President Oshka's resignation. And Director... Vice President Cobb, that would be your honor.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's kind of strange to think that catches you off-guard and gives you that little lump in your throat, so just... So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. But before, I just want to thank Councilwoman-elect. Agenda Item Number Six is Board Reorganization and Election of Officers. So the Board of Directors will proceed with the annual organizational meeting pursuant to Policy 1210 as follows. So first, I'll call for nominations for President to serve during the ensuing year.
Vice President Cobb, if I may. I would like to nominate Vice President Andrea Cobb to serve as Board President during the next ensuing year.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
I believe we need a roll call, do we not?
Let's do a roll call. All those voting...
That's okay.
Vice President Cobb?
Aye.
Director Heinz?
Aye.
And Director Viall?
Aye.
So the motion passes three to zero. Is there a call for nominations for Vice President to serve during the ensuing year?
President Cobb, I would like to nominate Director Viall.
I second that.
And the roll call vote, President Cobb?
Aye.
Director Heinz?
Aye.
Director Viall?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. So with that, the board's going to take five minutes to break, to get reorganized and just for all us to get more hugs and to... So we'll be in break for about five minutes.
Tomorrow? Oh, today? No, tomorrow.
Ready for that school?
Oh, yes.
Okay, obviously, that is correct. So what are you going to do? Are you leaving? Or are you staying home?
No, I'm staying. Yes. Yes. Those are the best days. It's good to have one of those days once in a while. Yeah. Right on the side table.
I'm paving past it. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm tired. I feel like I didn't have a goal or something.
Luckily, I have not gotten sick. I said luckily, I have not gotten sick.
My thing is always like, right when I can see the end and I can actually start to relax a little bit, then I'm like... What are you going to do over the holidays? You going to relax a little bit?
Yes.
I think we should have...
We actually had the Gem Day at my school Monday. It was great. It was comfy all day.
Because everybody else has to...
It feels so great.
Sounds good.
Is it really?
It was sitting in my file.
It was?
Yeah.
I think we're going to come back together. Yeah. But we can just get...
Just tell me which ones we can...
Merry Christmas.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. That's the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to amend... To approve the agenda or amend it?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So the motion is passed three to zero. Number Nine, Recognition of Staff, Students, and Community. 9.1, recognition of four IDEA students for earning $100 scholarships in an innovation competition hosted by the Washington State School Directors Association.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. The innovative school you commissioned to launch just a year ago is already racking up honors. The Washington State School Directors Association recently hosted an invitational challenge to just a few select schools from across the state to compete in a showcase. And the four-member team from the Industrial Design Engineering and Arts High School won individual scholarships for their creative work. DLR Group, an international integrated design firm that has done work for us here in Tacoma Public Schools, sponsored the competition. Noah Greenberg from DLR is here tonight to present the scholarships. The fictional challenge that the students faced was they... They had won a multimillion-dollar grant to tackle one local issue. And the students had to come up with a vision, a budget, a funding schedule, a two-minute public service announcement, and present their work in front of a panel of judges. And I'll let you tell them about what their scholarship-winning project was because when you hear about it, you might like it so much, you might want to pursue it. So welcome Principal... Or, excuse me, Co-Director Zach Varnell and the IDEA team of Charles Coffin, Macquarie Templeton, Jerrah Roller, and Spencer Reese.
We were so honored to have our students invited to participate in the DLR Group's Innovation Challenge at the Washington State School Directors Association Conference this past November in Bellevue. We were invited with a number of other schools. And as Dan explained, they were given the 24 hours to come up with how they would spend this multimillion-dollar grant. We were really honored that they actually focused on their own community and decided to look at the south side and east side of Tacoma as a place to build a building for the IDEA High School and also for an innovation center for businesses to partner with community organizations in the Tacoma School District to come up with a facility for both students and community organizations to serve the needs of our community. It was really exciting to see the work of their collaborative efforts over the course of that 24 hours. They were commended by the jurors for their collaborative efforts together and how they worked together and presented. Um, they were commended by the jurors for um, their collaborative efforts together and how they worked together and um, presented and um, were awarded with uh, scholarships for their, for their work. So we're super proud of all the work that they've done. And uh, this is Noah, I believe, from DLR Group to present their awards.
Thank you, Zach, and thank you everyone for the opportunity to be here. DLR Group is a design and engineering firm. And this is the first year we brought this challenge to Washington. We have done it at the national level at NSBA a couple times and it was one of your colleagues in Federal Way, the school board member there um, who suggested we bring it to the state of Washington and we did so and of course reached out to, to IDEA to uh, have you guys participate. Um, our mission is to elevate the human experience through design and we can't really do that without having some experiences of our own and understanding the way that students are operating and thinking and, and learning today. So we're very excited that you guys are here. I have a certificate for each one of you and a, and the gift itself. So uh, Charles, uh, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Good work. And Jara is next.
Yes.
Next one. Thank you very much. Good job. And Macari. Thank you. Good job. And Spencer. We were really, we were really impressed by how articulate they were and the passion with which they presented their ideas and we think you should carry that torch forward. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
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 Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Great job. Congratulations.
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 Thank you. Great job. Congratulations.
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 Look like a phone call.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
You need it.
Thank you for your leadership.
Zach, you've got your.
Oh, sorry.
It's critical.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good seeing you.
Thank you for the partnership. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Moving on to item nine point two, recognition of four schools named as twenty seventeen schools of distinction. Wilson, Lincoln and Oakland High Schools and the Science and Math Institute, Sammy.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. Each year about this time, the leading educational associations across the state get together and review data and identify and honor the top five percent of schools statewide. And this year, just ninety-eight schools earned an award. The Tacoma Public Schools traditionally has been well represented on the list and this year's no, no exception. On Monday night, the awards were presented by the Center for Educational Excellence and its partners, the Association of Washington School Principals, Washington Association of School Administrators, Washington ASCD and the Association of Educational Service Districts. And we have new and repeat winners to honor tonight. All high schools and all for their sustained growth in both graduation rate and academic, academic achievement on state English, language, arts and math tests. Now, I think it's important to note how profound this honor is. It comes just ten years after a cover story on USA Today declared our comfort, all of our comprehensive high schools as dropout factories. And yet Tacoma Public Schools was the only district in the state with four secondary schools to win this honor this year. First up, when I joined the district in two thousand and nine, Oakland High School was thought of as an alternative high school with frankly, a lackluster reputation. And that is no longer the case. That's changed in a big way and this year Oakland's team has earned its first of hopefully many schools of distinction honors. Please welcome Principal John Jones. Uh, next up, winning the award for the second year in a row is our nationally award-winning innovative school at Point Defiance Park, the Science and Math Institute. Please welcome co-directors Liz Minks and Joni Hall. When we talk about academic improvement and graduation rate success, um, our go-to school for storytelling is often Lincoln High School. When you hear naysayers from around the country who will tell you that you can't succeed in a high poverty urban school district, we hold up Lincoln's track record and say, oh, yes, you can. Lincoln has won the school of distinction award for the third year in a row. Please welcome Principal Pat Irwin. And last but certainly not least, it's very, very difficult to put the success of Wilson High School into words profound enough to capture what that uh, school has accomplished over the last several years. This year marked the seventh consecutive year that Wilson has won this school of distinction honor. No other school in the state has done that. And Wilson's incredible run has come under the leadership of this year's state high school principal of the year, who is retiring at the end of this school year. Please welcome Mr. Dan Bissett. So I'm, I'm gonna turn the mic over to each of the principals and co-directors just to say a few words about the accomplishments of, of their schools and their teams.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, this really wasn't on our radar. Uh, when Carla sent out the message a few days early with the information, the other principals all replied and all I, I kinda came in on the end of the conversation and I thought they were joking. I wasn't sure why I was included in the conversation. Uh, the only thing that I really knew about uh, schools of distinction was that uh, Wilson is very proud and announces every year how they do it over and over and over again. And I'm also very proud of Wilson and every school in Tacoma. And I just wanna say thank you for the support that we get each and every day. Our students, thank you. Our staff, thanks you. Oakland really, we do work hard to uh, just meet every kid where they're at and uh, try to figure out a way to move forward and we'll keep doing that. Thank you.
So I think we would like to echo uh, what John said. Um, the research is in. I mean, it's really about the relationships that um, students have with staff that care about them, pushing them to their potential. And um, we know this to be true. The students have told us that the thing that they love about their school is that they feel cared about by each of their teachers and that's the most important thing and why they think it's a, a special place. Um, but I also think it's because we're hiring tremendous people. We're doing a really good job of hiring um, teachers that know how to meet students where they're at, just like John said. And I think that the community partnerships and the support that you've given us have um, helped us to win, win this honor. So thank you very much.
I'm gonna keep my comments short so I can uh, cede my time to Mr. Bissett because seven times in a row is incredible. So let's give him another big round of applause in Wilson High School. I think one of my mantras about Tacoma Public Schools is that the leadership in Tacoma supports Lincoln High School every day, all the way. And I really appreciate that from the board level, from the superintendent level, deputy superintendent and everybody at central office. So I wanna thank you for that. Um, my, my story is very simple. I hired the best people who are going to be most effective with my kids at Lincoln High School. And every school needs the best people at their schools for their kids, but who I've hired at Lincoln High School are meeting the needs of my kids every day. We work hard, we create families and community and tribes and what have you. And this is just another uh, recognition of the work that my teachers do. So this is for my teachers and my kids and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Uh, especially the school board, the support you've given us over the last uh, you know, ten years, basically. Uh, anything we ask for where we can show you that it will help kids, uh, the answer's yes. And so that's a big help. And Pat and I have always talked about hiring great people. Sammy stole our line, so it's okay. It's all right. Um, but uh, thank you. I'm actually quite excited about retiring. I'm tired, okay?
No excuse, Dan. There's some.
Excuse me.
Congratulations.
Four.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're a fantastic student.
Thank you.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It was always great.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
He's already got.
Yeah.
Well, he's old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got it.
I do not.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item nine point three, recognition.
President Cobb.
Oh, yeah.
Just uh, just a couple of comments. One, um, I think with Oakland High School and, and the decision um, to remove the alternative, it's, it's a high school. Uh, the Science and Math Institute is an alternative high school. School of the Arts is an alternative high school. And when we label, uh, I think then we tend to project uh, what's going on in that building. And there's tremendous things going on in that building and those kids are capable and achieving. They may need some extra different supports, uh, but that's what public education is all about. So very proud of what's going on in Oakland. Um, and then uh, I was teasing uh, Principal Bissett when we were walking in this evening because we've not yet approved the consent agenda that officially allows him to retire. So.
See, that needs how many votes up here?
We, we may need you to come back for uh, an eighth one in a row and, and to uh, to Liz and, and Pat and just tremendous. It's, it's four high schools from one school district is an amazing honor and it's, we were talking about this the other day at the Levy Kickoff Breakfast, that we just have the absolute best people at all levels of organization. And the work that you do, I, I don't doubt that Dan is tired and I think all of our principals are tired because you put in tremendous hours twelve months out of the year. So thank you so much for all that you're doing for our kids.
Comment? Thank you. Um, you know, what we do here, we take for granted, but there are no other school districts in the country that's doing what we're doing. And we know that. And each and every one of you, high school principals and teachers, um, and all of our staff do amazing work. And I also wanna give uh, John Jones kudos. John, you do belong in that group and you have for the last couple of years and Director Heinz said it well. It is Oakland High School and it's a part of our fort, our portfolio for our kids, just as our other schools are. Patrick, the job that you do at Lincoln is unprecedented. It's amazing. Um, the work that it's done at Sammy and Sota and all IDEA across the board, same way. And I think um, our other two uh, high schools, I know Foss made amazing gains this year and they're gonna be hot on the trail, as is Mount Dejoma. So I think we're going to see some amazing, amazing things in the next couple of years. But Dan Bissett in particular, and I have to put my Wilson Ram hat on. Um, we are gonna miss you. I know you got my grandson already enrolled to go to, to uh, Wilson, but, but seriously, you took Wilson from not being basically a flagship quality school that it once was and brought it back to that kind of a standing in our community and have graduated in uh, an unprecedented large uh, rates, rates over ninety percent. Anyway, I know on behalf of Wilson alums, I thank you and as a board member and member of this community, I thank you. And we are gonna miss you and I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, if Heinz and I vote no, then you're stuck here for another year, but we'll talk about that. Anyway, thank you all for what you've done.
We're gonna move on to number nine point three, recognition of Lincoln High School senior James Amora for a historic cross-country career, including winning his second state championship.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. How many of you have ever sprained your ankle in here? How many? Raise your hand, sprained your ankle? Yeah. It's kind of a universal experience. Well, imagine that you're the Washington State cross-country champion and you sprain your ankle the day before the national championship race. Well, Lincoln High School senior James Amora doesn't have to imagine it. He lived it. And here to tell you more about our state champion, James, his accomplishments and introduce him to you is Principal Pat Irwin and his cross-country coach, Dwayne Lee.
So I'm, I'm just gonna take a minute. Self-mockery is one of my greatest strengths. And um, I want you, when you drive home tonight, to set a timer of some sort and keep your eyes on the road, but have the alarm go off at eight minutes and fifty-four seconds, cause that's how fast James runs, two miles. Yeah, I see a lot of, I hear a lot of dings and I see a lot of jaws dropping. I was a runner in high school and college and I was a coach. And I also ran an eight fifty-four, but it was for seven eighths of the race that James ran. In other words, he would be lapping me, um, smiling as he did it because he's incredibly kind. But uh, James, James this year had the best athletic season of any runner in the history of Tacoma. And I believe he may have had the best season of any athlete ever in Tacoma Public Schools' history. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dwayne Lee, but uh, James is again, an accomplished athlete, but just as kind a person as you can ever meet. And he's got a bright future ahead of him with many choices for college. So anyhow, Dwayne Lee, coach at Lincoln High School.
Um, I would like to thank the school board for um, recognizing and honoring James tonight for this. Um, a few, I'll just run down a few of his accomplishments. He's the first uh, Lincoln athlete uh, to qualify for the state cross-country meet four years in a row. As a freshman, he was thirty-fourth. As a sophomore, he was eighth. And then his junior and senior year, he was back-to-back state champions. Um, his track career is also um, one of very noteworthy, like Mr. Irwin just said, uh, eight fifty-four for thirty-two hundred meters is incredibly fast. He's also a, a three-time league champion, uh, two times, uh, or one time in the Narrows League and two times in our new Pierce County League. Uh, he's a three-time West Central District champion. I don't know that any other Tacoma school district athlete has had that. Um, he, his second run at the state title this year over in Pasco, they've been running the state meet there for thirty years. And his time of fourteen forty-eight for three point one miles is the fifth fastest time ever run on that course. So he's left quite a, quite a, a path behind him. Um, but the one thing I always say about James is as good a runner or as great a runner as he is, he's also a better human being. Um, he is, he is a fierce competitor. Um, he knows no other way to, to run other than from the front and as hard as he can. Um, but what's really uh, special about him is as he's standing in the finish line chute, getting his little drink of water or Gatorade, Gatorade or whatever they have for them, uh, he will stand there and he will shake hands of the competitors coming in behind them. And tell them what a great job they've done. Congratulations, so on and so forth. So he does a great job in not just representing Lincoln High School, uh, but Tacoma as a community as well, too. So um, I'm gonna turn it over to James uh, for a few moments and again, we, we thank you for this honor tonight.
Um, I would just like to thank Coach Lee, um, the school board for this um, nominee and my coach and my parents, um, for everything they have done for me, for their support and everyday support. And Mr. Irwin, uh, I'd like to do the support. Um, thank you for their support and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Fuller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Here you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Where are you going next?
It's awesome.
Let us know we figured.
Congratulations, James. Good job.
That's incredible. Congratulations.
Amazing. Okay, stadium.
Can I just, I just wanna congratulate James and the whole Lincoln crew one more time. And in this, Lincoln celebrations, all of our district celebrations are special to me. But I'm a Lincoln Ave, so Lincoln celebrations are particularly important to me. And I just wanna emphasize how much of a strong community we have because Coach Lee was coaching our track team when I was a student at Lincoln in high school. And Andrew Fuller in the back is another exceptional athlete and person that came out of Tacoma School District. So Lincoln just has a strong legacy of turning out scholars and athletes and people who come back and give what they receive. So I just wanna recognize that team again for continuing generation after generation of passing down the, what has been given to you. So congratulations. Item nine point four, recognition of Stadium High School girls soccer for taking second place in the state soccer tournament. Nineteen to one record.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. The girls soccer team at Stadium High School also had a historic run this season, taking that undefeated season into the state championship against Mercer Island. Team finished nineteen and one and second in the state. That's farther than any girls soccer team in school history. And of course, Stadium has the longest school, high school history in the school district. Stadium has the longest school, high school history in the school district. These team members displayed grit, togetherness, and competitive spirit that brought honor to their school and their district. Together, they held a team grade point average of three point three-nine. Mackenzie Burks was selected by the News Tribune as the All Area Soccer Player of the Year, and Pierce County All League Soccer Offensive Player of the Year. Two other players, Kaylee Hall and Catherine Nelson, were named first-team All League, and Monique Nagel was named second-team All League. Please honor and welcome the team, led by co-captain Naya Rivera.
Hi. First of all, I want to say thank you for having us. This season, we had a very strong season, being nineteen and one, only losing one game. Took a lot of heart and hard work. And we're a very young team, so with only three graduating seniors. So we'll be back next year. Thank you.
Item number ten, members of the public wishing to address the board. So the school board welcomes, the school board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, follow these steps. First, complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments, and you'll get a one-minute wording on the clock when you have one minute left.
First speaker is Tina Taylor from Bryant regarding field trips. And she will be followed by Kimmy Irene Gin from Vibrant Schools regarding congrats.
Hi. Congratulations, everyone. And congratulations, President. My name is Tina Taylor. I teach fourth and fifth grade at Bryant Montessori here in Tacoma. And today's Montessori Education Minute for you is about the importance of what Maria Montessori called going out. So that meant taking the children out into the world to experience things, which we now call field trips or field studies. So at Bryant, in fourth and fifth grade, the children go on seven or eight field trips a year. We go to camp every other year. We walk from our centrally-located building down to the museums, to the museum on the Theophos Waterway. We've been to the Water Festival, the University of Putah Sound. We're lucky to be located where we can get to so many things, walking. And we're also lucky to have intrepid students who don't mind walking a mile or two one way to see something interesting and learn something new. This year, we're a little bit sad and about some of our field trips that are in jeopardy. One is one that we scheduled to the Museum of Flight in Seattle, and another is to the Biztown Facility, the JA, the Junior Achievement Biztown Facility in Auburn. These are two really excellent educational opportunities, especially given how important Boeing is to our region financially and career-wise for our students. We are finding that we have the issue of needing to leave our building no earlier than nine thirty, and be back in Tacoma by one thirty PM because of buses and a shortage of drivers. So that means if you do your math, hopefully you make it to Seattle in an hour. We all know it's probably more like an hour and a half at nine thirty in the morning, and we would be able to stay at the Museum of Flight for about an hour, maybe an hour and fifteen minutes, including lunch, which, as you can see, doesn't make the travel time really very feasible. Similar situation to go to the Junior Achievement Facility down in Auburn. The program there runs three and a half hours, and we've heard that they have shortened it to an hour and a half for some elementary schools who run into the same issues here in Tacoma. So I'm hoping that the board can maybe look to the future, figure out how to solve that bus problem, so that our kids can have the opportunities that they deserve. And thank you very much.
Kimmy Irene Gin.
Good evening and happy holidays. First of all, just on behalf of Vibrant Schools, we wanted to offer our congratulations to all of the, we didn't realize there was going to be so much congratulations, but we wanted to offer congratulations to Catherine, as she departed to go on and become our councilperson here in Tacoma. But we also want to extend, since we've been able to witness this evening, welcoming new President Cobb, Vice President Viall, and the signing in of Director Heinz. We welcome you to be part of the school board. And as a community-based organization, we want to continue to dedicate what we believe to be part of our responsibility from the community, to work with you, to make sure that every student, every day, is successful, that we continue to have the improvements that we think we need to have for our students in our community here in Tacoma, and to let you know that Vibrant Schools is here to work with you in partnership, to make sure that every day, we do have every student who's successful. And so on behalf of Vibrant School, we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
That's all the public speakers.
Thank you. So moving on to item number eleven, the superintendent's report. There's no report tonight?
No report.
And item twelve, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
Madam President, may I just make a quick comment? You see that there's several names on the consent agenda of people that are departing the district for all the right reasons, retirements and celebrations. One of those individuals is, this is their last meeting with us. There's an old saying, it goes something like, it's a poor craftsman that blames his tools for his product. I would argue, if your tools are really dull, it's really difficult. Mr. Sean Taylor has worked for the school district for ten years, and has quietly helped us build infrastructure and tools, so that educators can reach kids, students, community in a whole new manner. His work has been spotlighted nationally with his partnerships with Microsoft. He refuses to give hugs, so I'd just like to give him a public hug right now, and thank him for his service on behalf of the cabinet and the rest of the team. We will deeply miss Mr. Taylor, his thoughtfulness, his great sense of humor, and his desire to become more effective and efficient, all in the name of helping children. So thank you for indulging me.
Any other comments? Well, I just want to say that I in particular will miss you, Mr. Taylor. You always have the answer to my question about bandwidth and equipment, so I just appreciate your service to the district and all of our kids.
I think without Sean's partnerships and things with Microsoft, we probably wouldn't be where we are right now as a district. Our data dashboards, our benchmarking, all of our ability. And I'm gonna, this is a joke between Sean and I, but I am going to miss him lurking in the back, in the back of the room for, as he leaves us. But, you know, all the best wishes. And I feel special, because I did get a hug the other day when I stopped by to tell Sean how much I appreciate his work. But we are going to miss you, but we wish you well in retirement. And if you get bored, you know, you can always, on a Thursday night, you can always come by and lurk in the back of the room. Thank you, Sean.
All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes three to zero. Item number thirteen, policy matters. Thirteen point one, first reading social-emotional learning policy. And this is a new policy.
On behalf of the legal counsel, the deputy superintendent would like to acknowledge the first reading of the social-emotional learning policy. This is the first reading. We typically don't read the policy itself, but you'll see that there's a tremendous amount of markup in the policy. Per your request, we've asked numerous organizations, professional organizations, and the expertise nationally, locally, statewide, we've asked citizens, community groups to provide us input that have gotten us to this first draft. And we would anticipate that in a board meeting in January, we would bring that back to your consideration for further adjustments or potential adoption.
Any comments or questions?
I just have a comment. Given the major changes in this, in some of the policies that we have, that we allow, that we allow a meeting for displaying discussion on this policy, and then bring it back, unless there's a matter of urgency. I would like to see-
For a second reading?
Yeah, for a second reading, and have an opportunity for a final adoption, for discussion, unless there's, you know, extreme urgency on it.
I apologize, Director Viall. That's, this is the first reading, and we will bring it back to you. And I apologize for not articulating that. We're not seeking adoption today.
No, I'm not saying that. I guess what's bothered me, like, you know, for the last year or so, is that we don't have enough time to discuss amendments before we have to vote on it at that board meeting. And I would like to see us look at some new process for, on major policy matters, or major pieces of work that come before us, that we kind of take a look at more time perhaps, for more thoughtful discussion among us before we have to vote on something, unless it's a matter of an emergency.
So maybe we should bring, bring it on at first reading, and then-
That's what I, that's what I would, I would like to see. And I, you know, I'd be glad to discuss it. And process for amendments, where we have an opportunity as a board to look at them before, if any of us propose them, before we have to vote. And I think it makes us more professional, and I think it makes us more thoughtful. I don't think it's going to mess up our process. In fact, I think it's going to improve it some. Just personally, I'd like to see us do that. And I'll offer your, rest of you kind of in agreement with that.
Yeah, I think it's always, I appreciate it when we can hear back from the public, and it doesn't, we don't get their input on the day that we take formal action, that there's a meeting or a buffer in between, so that we can thoughtfully consider what's been given, and see if there's, if it makes sense to include in the policy.
I think, it's just a procedural thing, I think, for more transparency and more opportunity for us as a board to sit up here and discuss potential changes or not changes, and then have you go back and tweak them. And then at the final reading, we can adopt, if that makes sense. Make a first reading, that, that process, where you would go through, or whoever, Dr. Garcia, and explain where the changes are, and what we might like you to consider, or is among us, have a, have some thoughtful discussion on this. Yeah, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the policy itself, but I would just like to see us have that opportunity to really, fully more understand what we're voting on, and how we're voting on it. So I appreciate your consideration.
Absolutely. So what I hear is a three-step process. I just want to check our thinking is, the first is a first reading, the second would be is a discussion at a further board meeting, and then the final would be at the next board meeting, that would be?
No, the first reading could be the discussion meeting, where we get the policy, we have that opportunity, and then we just roll it out and discuss it at that time, and then have the final vote. And then probably there'd be a two, you know, enough time if it's a significant policy. I think, I don't think we need three separate, you know, unless you let us know for a first reading, this is coming up, and then the second, and we adopt a second reading, and then a third reading for, and we still do what we want to do within one or one or so meetings. So I think we can do that. First, a first reading is just a, for most places, it's just a notification. And I don't think we need, I think we can put the two together first, and at that first reading, where here it is, this is what it is, just like we have you explain, when we go through our action items, and then we have an opportunity as a board to spend some time, a little bit more thoughtfully, perhaps. And also, you know, opportunity for the public to make comments if they choose to do so. So, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? With that change, would you expect to have more, and the presentation, more of a presentation of the policy, like the intent of the changes?
Exactly. I would like, for example, if this were the, tonight, if this were, in my mind, the way I would see it, Dr. Garcia would go through the policy and explain, you know, what was struck out, what was added, who recommended what, and then give us an opportunity as a board to ask, ask questions. And then if there is any amendments to be made, we would have a couple of weeks that we, as a board, could send our amendments to each other, so that we see them before the board meeting and have an opportunity. For, for example, Director Heinz and I have done this informally for, since the six years we've been on the board, about what do you think of this, or what do you think of that? So, but we actually have that opportunity to discuss it up here, so that we get a little more transparent, perhaps, in our discussions. So that's what I'm thinking.
For the purpose of tonight, would you like me to read the policy, or would you like?
No, we'll, we can skip that for tonight. Okay. Because I'd like to see that put in a board process and a board policy as to how we, how we do business. And, Ole, did you get that? Okay, good. So that come up with a, you know, a codified process for us, as to how we consider major policies matters. Thank you.
I think that's a good recommendation. I think it allows the public in particular to have a little bit more context in the background. And in many cases of RCWs and all that, that kind of wrapped around that policy. And in this case, just more context around the frame. Item thirteen point two, first reading, school gardens policy. And this is also new.
So this is, once again, a first reading. And what tonight is, is just to give you a little background, this has been in the works for a while. And it came from community. And Director Heinz asked the board to consider, which the board reemphasized. And the background here is, how do we help schools and communities that want to work within a school, raise a garden, and if they choose to, actually eat the food that the kids actually raise? And from a background of furthering nutrition, and furthering science, and furthering several other opportunities, this would allow schools to have that local choice to do so. It is not requiring schools. And then the matching regulations are laid out there in the intent to show folks how they would actually be able to accomplish those things. So there still would be an opportunity for families to choose to participate, if they want to, or to not participate, in both the participation of raising the food, as well as potentially consuming the food.
Thank you.
President Cobb? Yeah, I'd just like to add, I appreciate the policy coming forward. This has been an issue of interest to me over a number of years, working with community partners and stakeholders. And really, we've become known as an organization that removes barriers. And there has been a challenge in the past, that kids, especially elementary school kids, are given an opportunity to plant the seed, and tend to the seed, and to watch that seed become something that looks interesting and edible. And then that's where what I call the adult problem sets in, and they're unable to do so. So for us to figure out how we can safely provide kids with the opportunity, the satisfaction of eating what they've grown. And I think Deputy Superintendent said it well, to me, this is the framework. We're not mandating that every school now have a garden. But if you are interested in having a garden, and I also see lots of opportunity for partnership, not exclusively partnership, but there's, there's all sorts of community organizations that I think would be interested in being a part of this. And now we're giving everybody a framework by which to operate in Tacoma Public Schools.
Any other comments? Item fourteen, quarterly financial updates. And there's no quarterly financial update tonight. But presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, and about and finance. Item fifteen, curriculum instruction. There's no curriculum instruction item tonight. Sixteen business matters, and sixteen point one, approval of inter-local agreement with Rochester School District.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, requests the board to approve the inter-local agreement with Rochester School District, funding source, special education.
So a motion to-
Uh, move adoption.
Second.
All those, or any just questions? All those are, all those in favor of adopting the, approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Sixteen point two, approval of three-year inter-local agreement with Washington Center for Childhood Deafness and Hearing Loss.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, requests the board to approve the inter-local agreement with Washington State Center for Childhood Deafness and Hearing Loss, funding source, special education.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I've got a question.
Director Heinz?
So is the CDHL purchasing services from Tacoma Public Schools?
Yes, they are.
And I know- And I, I know, and here's one of the challenges of, um, now moving into the seventh year of being on the board, my time sequencing, but I believe it was a couple of years ago where we had some really good input from, um, the deaf and hard of hearing community. I- i- is this, how will this impact them if, at all?
Assistant Superintendent Trafler will explain.
I don't believe this will impact. What we heard before was about the payment of our interpreters that we hire in our district. We did address that. We, um, reached an agreement and we have been quite successful in hiring our own interpreters since then. So that's been a big, big win for us. We've been able to really reduce our contracting. This particular agreement really addresses the professional development and the staffing in working with CDHL. So this is one in particular where we, um, we enter into agreement and then there's some, some changes and so with this one, we have an interpreter coordinator at a one point O. At present time, we don't necessarily need a one point O and CDHL needs a bit of their service and so we do some back and forth with them to help meet the needs. It works well for both of us.
Okay, thank you.
Quick, a kind of a clarifying question on this. But CDL is that basically the center, is that basically the old Washington State School for the Deaf?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good. Thank you. I thought it was. It's showing my age now. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes three to zero. Sixteen point three, approval of interlocal agreement with Auburn School District.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services requests the board to approve the interlocal agreement with Auburn School District, funding source, special education.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? So all those in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Sixteen point four, authorized entering into a contract with PFM Financial Advisors LLC to provide financial advisory services to Tacoma School District Number Ten.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to enter into a contract for services with PFM Financial Advisors LLC for financial advisory services, both general and financing services related to bond issues on behalf of the district.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Have you, have we worked with this organization before?
Correct, yes. That was, they worked with us on our last bond.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes zero, three to zero. Sixteen point five, approval of interlocal agreement with Educational Service District One Twelve and Tacoma School District.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services recommends the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent or designee to enter into a three-year interlocal agreement between the Tacoma School District and the Educational Service District One Twelve in Vancouver, Washington, funding source, general technology funds.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the, uh, a, a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three to zero. Item seventeen, other business, seventeen point one, adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-nine, sale of surplus district-owned property, Geodrome Parcel.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt and approve resolution number two zero two nine, sale of surplus district-owned property of Geodrome Parcel. Then the Superintendent of Tacoma Public Schools is authorized to execute a purchase and sell agreement with West Coast Management LLC for the sale of the property and to take any and all actions necessary to common consumer, uh, enclose the transaction set forth in a purchase and sell agreement and convey the property to West Coast, West Coast Management LLC, excuse me.
Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, move adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Seventeen point two, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Four for the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Skanska USA Building.
Uh, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Chris, I jumped.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the GMP Amendment Number Four, which states that the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP, for the fourth bid package on the Browns Point Elementary School project, authorize the Superintendent or designee to sign said GMP Amendment Number Four in amount of five million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four excluding sales tax. Funding source, capital projects bond is approved by voters on February twelfth, two thousand thirteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I do have a question.
And Vice President Biel?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Williams, is this the last one?
Yeah, so this is the last, uh, bid package. There, intentionally was going to be five bid packages. We wanted to, obviously be the last time we presented to the board. I know there was some issue that previous in the past, we, uh, presented this one time. It's our intention in the near future to do only one bid package so we don't have to go through this process, but yes, this is the final bid project.
Uh, just off the top of your head, how much have we approved so far? Do you?
So.
Concerning this is the capstone I'm, I'm curious.
Right, so the board approved, uh, a budget prior to, uh, by existence here at Tacoma Public Schools for thirty-six point eight million dollars. It's too early to, to state, uh, where we at exactly with the budget, but I will tell you, it's our intention of our, of the department to not exceed, uh, the budget that was allocated by the board.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Also appreciate, uh, the work that you and Morris have done since you came here to get our, our capital program, you know, back, uh, I guess, uh, you know, back in the house, so to speak. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, there's a motion. All those in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Seventeen point three, approval of naming of the field at Mount Tahoma Stadium to George Nordee Field per policy, sixty-nine seventy R, facilities naming.
The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the naming of George Nordee Field located at the Mount Tahoma Stadium site and I've asked, I've asked our Administrator of Athletics to come up and, uh, and Student Life to give us a little bit of introduction to this item.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, as at the last board meeting when we had opportunity to, um, present this, uh, agenda item that we went back with some feedback around, uh, how can we best address this as the committee had intended and yet still meet the needs of the school district? And so upon some discussion with our committee members, uh, we came to a conclusion that the best way to move forward would be to name the field, George Nordee Field at Mount Tahoma Stadium while keeping the name of the stadium, Mount Tahoma Stadium. Uh, we have a couple, we have one of the board members from our committee, Mr. Tony Anderson here, and then Mr. Nordee's daughter, Lynn Nordee, here, and I'd like to recognize them being here. Lynn is an employee of the district, works at Jason Lee also. Um, and so thank you. Would you like to say something?
Just briefly, I, I want to thank all of you for this consideration. I know that George is looking down with smile and with pride. I know that his wonderful wife, Luanne, Lynn, Scott, Brent, the grandchildren, uh, once you pass this, we'll be beaming with that same pride. So on behalf of all of them, thank you so much for this consideration, for this honor, for a very great man. As I, and as I said earlier, I, you're, every student, George took that to every student, every day, in every single way. And helped teach, coach, and honor all those students for thirty-five years. Thank you very much.
Yep, Vice President Biel?
Thank you. Um, I, I really pleased that we get the opportunity to do this and to name the field after George. Personally knew George well and when Tony mentioned every day, every, every student, not just the kids at Mount Tahoma, but George cared about all the other kids I know and our son who was playing at FOS, uh, as he puts it, got his bell rung, actually got knocked out. And, uh, it was, uh, he was, he was fine. I think I had the migraine and he had a slight headache the next day, but, um, George was right there on the field and with us and came to the hospital along with Kevin Aket and Don Burmaster. So, you know, this is, uh, the right thing for us to do with the things that he contributed to not only Mount Tahoma, but to the district and I'm sorry Scott's not here tonight because he's coached our kids at FOS. In fact, our youngest one, when he came back to coach at FOS was nicknamed Little Nordee because he was as intense as Scott was when he coached. So, uh, I think it's just, I'm, I'm just very happy that we, we could arrive at, at this point, that that field will bear George's name and, um, will be there for a very, very long time. So I appreciate, uh, Tony, your work and Willie's on the committee and all the rest and I kept an eye and had to offer suggestions where needed. As you know, you and I've worked together on a lot of projects. So thank you so much.
Well, all those in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. We just want to thank you again for your, um, participation on the committee who brought this forward to us and for just, um, helping to carry forward his legacy at Mount Tahoma. Thank you. So item number seventeen point four, approval of resolution proclaiming January twenty eighteen as Tacoma Whole Child Month and encouraging community partner municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for a whole child approach to educating and serving the children of our community.
On behalf of the Executive Director of Communications, the Deputy Superintendent recommends the Board of Directors proclaim January two thousand eighteen as Tacoma Whole Child Month and encourage community partner municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for the whole child approach to educating and serving the children of our community.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in, oh, any discussion?
Uh, I guess it asks us to, um, encourage our community partners to do that. I would ask that we draft a letter up for, and I know I did that, I think Director Heinz did too, or maybe it was me when it started, to send to our community, our community partner municipalities and organizations asking them to do the same thing. Thank you.
Great idea. Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. And then item seventeen, seventeen point five, adoption of a twenty eighteen Tacoma Public Schools legislative agenda.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed priority listed, pro- proposed, excuse me, proposed priorities listed in the two thousand eighteen legislative agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Brown is here, our government affairs consultant, if anybody had any questions. I'm, I'm good. Um, we worked on this agenda through, I think, back, starting back in October, November. This is going to be, uh, you know, a critical session. I, the governor did come out today and, and announced when he did his budget that, I heard it this morning, that the legislature isn't going to be allowed, as far as he's concerned, to take the year off. Because that's been the kind of consensus where we'll let this go for a year. Well, that might be fine, but we all know that if we get behind, it's pretty darn hard to catch back up again. So I appreciated those comments and, um, I think if any board have questions, maybe Charlie's the one that can, is best, uh, fit, fit to answer them. Getting tired tonight. My grandchildren wore me out trying to watch him run around here. So, thank you.
Um, Dr. Garcia?
Uh, just for those that are, uh, the board knows this, but for those that are home, these are, um, uh, priorities that we work towards. Uh, during the session, this is not the exact language that we, uh, we seek to necessarily adopt. The legislators work with staff, um, when bills get proposed, staff, board members have the opportunity then to provide feedback on the extent of some of these priorities. And so, um, sometimes we hear folks and saying, well, you, are you really meaning that exact word? And the answer is, is no, the intent of these priorities is what we try to advance and we ask that there's flexibility in the approach to work there. Um, we oftentimes will also work with what are the surrounding issues that our colleagues are facing around the district. So the superintendent works with area school superintendent districts, um, other professional organizations to try to work in, uh, as much in unison as we possibly can. So just a little background for those that are at home.
I just have one comment about one item on the agenda as it is and I appreciate your comments about the intent versus the specific language that's here. And this is, and I want to apologize to my colleagues on the board for not raising this sooner. It's just something that I didn't, um, clue in on to make a comment about before now. Um, but there's an item and one of our, I, one of our priorities around relaxing spending restrictions and categorical funding, I just, for my purposes, for my own, um, communication with colleagues on the board and for the public too, I think that programs are made categorical with some specific intent to serve certain kids. And there's reference to the state's learning assistance program here. That's, um, the primary objective is to support the needs of students who are struggling with English, languages, arts, math, readiness for kindergarten, and with behavior too. So I just hope that our intention, I think it is, to get flexibility to meet the needs of these students in the ways that make sense for Tacoma, rather than being logged down by specific reporting or other requirements of the program. So I just want our public to be clear that our intent is to be able to meet the needs of our kids in ways that make sense that might be hindered by the current, um, rules and restrictions around the program.
I think our thinking was, if I might, as our legislative rep, and Charlie, we all said before, and that exactly what you're saying is that because we have different needs and to have a little flexibility to, to take those dollars and do exactly what you're saying, because our needs with our children are different, say, for example, than a Bellevue or a other, so that, and, and obviously that we will be held accountable for the expenditure of those categorical funds. And so I think it was just designed for us to be able to say to the legislature, and I think, you know, as a district, I know that, uh, we have a great reputation in Olympia for holding ourselves accountable and to, to allow districts to tailor, tailor these programs to address, uh, Director Cobb, or President Cobb has used so, uh, well stated. The differentials that have, that occur within our school districts and how some school districts can, for example, on the lap dollars, spend it in a different way than we do, but yet achieve the same things that we're all set out to do. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Okay, does that explain what the thinking, it was not to, you know, not at all to go off the track and not serve our kids, you know? I don't think any of us sitting up there would be the first ones to say, Garcia, what were you thinking? Sandor, what were you thinking? So.
And I say that because I think sometimes.
Right, I understand.
The, the common mantra might be that districts will take the money and then spend it on administration, that that's not our intent.
That's not going to happen.
Our intent is to have the flexibility to meet the needs of our kids.
Just a real practical one in that, that sometimes, uh, the guidance or the requirements are very targeted at, um, uh, early learning, which is great. Uh, but when we look at the supports that we may have and with students that, uh, are mobile, um, we may have a real need at serving middle school students in the, the math and language arts. And those are the kind of flexibilities that we're seeking is, is looking at our data to help the most traditionally vulnerable and underrepresented populations achieve the same success. It's, you're spot on, President Cobb, is to make sure that we are meeting the intent of the spirit of that, but sometimes looking for the flexibility of which students in our district need that support.
Director Heinz?
Yeah, I just, that's my understanding as well. And I think particularly given, um, what has happened with the McClary fix, last legislative session and the uncertainty about how much levy we're going to be able to collect, uh, th- there's a huge gap. And, uh, I think we need greater flexibility to make the investments in our kids, but certainly not to try to get away from, uh, servicing, uh, a group of kids. Uh, and I think that, um, I have real concerns, you know, the top item of getting us to twenty-five hundred, I hope that we get there. Uh, we'll still be at a deficit, uh, based on the analysis that I've seen, but at least we'll be closer to what we've been able to collect historically than, uh, where we are currently. And, uh, I appreciate Charlie does a great job representing our interests down in Olympia. Uh, people listen to him and Charlie's done a nice job of engaging with the board, uh, which is not easy because you get five people with five different perspectives. But, uh, thank you, uh, for representing the district and our individual interests collectively down in Olympia. And I, uh, I'm optimistic that we will come up with a solution. Um, but I, to Director Cobb's point, we absolutely don't want to do it at the sacrifice of a particular group of students that need a particular service. And I've not come across a constituency group yet that wants, um, that, I, I consistently hear more local control. They don't want people in Washington DC and they don't want people in Olympia. They want people in the local school districts that are publicly elected by the people to be making those decisions. And I think that flexibility allows us to have more control over the resources.
Any other comments? Well, I just have one more. I just want to say that I think that all two hundred and ninety-five school districts in our state should have full funding for institutional education.
in our state should have full funding for institutional education on their, on their legislative agenda. It's programs, our detention centers, it's facilities run by DSHS for students who are involved in juvenile justice system, and they're some of our most vulnerable kids, so, fully support one hundred percent, all two hundred and ninety-five districts in the state having this on their agenda. But, all those in favor of adopting our legislative agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Um, item number eighteen, reports to the Board, and there's none tonight, and then nineteen, Board comments and reports. Director Heinz?
Well, I kind of feel like we buried the lead. There's the eighty-six point one percent sitting up on the, on the dais, and people are probably, well, what is that number? It could be any number of things, but it's, the Superintendent with some students from grade middle school announced the graduation rate, so, would you provide some further explanation around the eighty-six point one?
I think, I, I think our community is well aware that you have all been out there working hard to align and to make sure that we are committed to supporting the things we've just talked about as part of supporting all students so that they can reach graduation. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a heavy endeavor, because we all face different students in each one of those cohorts, so I think it's a real credit, first of all, to the K-eight system about how they're supporting students. Um, you know, you go into an elementary school these days and you see the college sweatshirts hanging on the walls, and so, we really created that culture, and then, of course, that high, those high school principals that are out there really tracking the data, the data folks that are giving them the data from downtown Human Resources, who's hiring incredible teachers, it really is an incredible, great effort, and we are proud to announce that, you know, we set a goal to reach eighty-five percent in twenty twenty, and we, we reached eighty-five percent in two thousand and sixteen, and then our two thousand and seventeen accomplishment was eighty-six point one. So, congratulations to, um, the community of Tacoma for that work.
And I, I hope at some point we'll get a little, um, deeper briefing, because the performance of schools is really incredible, so...
It is.
You know, Wilson and Stadium, what they're able to achieve, and FOS and Mount E and where they're going, and Oakland, where they're going, um, we need to shine a light on that. And, and I think, you know, graduation rate is one of our benchmarks. It's not the only benchmark, but, uh, Dan Vopel said at the beginning of the meeting tonight, it was just ten years ago that we're on the front page of a national newspaper saying we're a dropout factory, so, we heard from the community, you need to fix graduation rates, and I think we are trending in the right direction. But the great thing about kids graduating with diplomas now in Tacoma Public Schools is that, um, you know, this whole growth versus proficiency, and sometimes it gets set up as an either-or proposition, like, they work together. We have things that we want kids to learn, we have to recognize that kids learn at different rates, and some kids come into the school system prepared differently, and it's going to take them longer, or it's going to take more time on a particular concept or a particular, uh, topic, and so, having both growth and proficiency, but it's why, as a Board, we've adopted multiple measures. We look at graduation rate, we look at test scores, and I know we have plans underway, we need to close the gaps. So, Director Cobb and I talked about that, uh, a few meetings ago, that when you look at those standardized test scores, regardless of what the test is, what the instrument is, there are discrepancy between kids of color and whites and Asian kids, we need to lean into that. Our Tacoma kids are leaning, are leaving school, uh, social emotional learning, so we are now memorializing the policy. They're going to go out in the community and be good human beings. It was great to hear James, who's a talented runner, but how many times did they emphasize, he's a good kid?
Yeah.
He's a good, he, he is, he is thoughtful, he's empathetic towards his competitor. Those are characteristics that come out of social emotional learning. Our kids get certifications that are industry-level certifications, they get internships, the next move program that's being expanded, the Vannies, the verified acceptance to next institution, they have a plan that's been verified for their year thirteen. So, I, I think it's easy to get wrapped around, oh, eighty-six point one percent, but what are these kids learning, uh, prior to the twelfth grade? It is a cumulative effect, and there is a lot of work to be done, because there are some gaps that, that still exist, but, um, I, I think that we, we can't just, um, brush aside the eighty-six point one, because it is remarkable. I do appreciate, I think we're done eating cake, so, the level of celebration, it's the new normal. We have ninth graders that come into school now, and they expect to graduate. They know nothing else. We now are creating a generation of kids that enter Tacoma Public Schools, and it's because there are community groups and, uh, others that wrap their arms around them and support them, uh, from the time they enter the school district until the time that they leave. So, uh, I'm just very proud of the work and our fearless leader, and, uh, Dr. Garcia, the person behind the scenes, who is just as responsible for the great work and success of the district, thank you for your leadership, I really appreciate it, especially having kids in the school that are going to get the benefit from the sort of school district that you are running on a daily basis.
Thank you. Great support.
Director Viall?
Um, a couple of things. Uh, on Tuesday, one of the, the speakers, the kids, was Caleb from Washington Elementary, who is blind, and I had, and he came here to talk about need for technology, and I had the privilege to sit next to him and have a conversation with him, and what an amazing young man, and, uh, and, and I guess what I took from that was that here, when we really do talk about meeting their, our kids where they are, that's a great example. Caleb has a technologies, he said, he has, he's, I said, what's your favorite thing that you've learned at school? He said Braille. And he has a computer, a keyboard, and his dad was talking, and he said, I can type anything I want, and, uh, and we had a conversation about, he said, well, I do want to be President of the United States, but I don't know about that, and, and I looked at him and I said, you know what? You, you can do whatever you want to do. I said, a whole bunch of years ago, before even probably your dad was born, somebody told me I could never be the mayor of Tacoma because I was a girl. Now we have three, so you just hang, hang in there. But anyway, that was, that was moving. Um, the other thing, yesterday, when we talk about our kids, what they're achieving in the programs, we had, um, went to Stadium's, uh, joint Navy ROTC, their junior ROTC, uh, what they call a pass and review, and for the first time, they won some, uh, state awards for having the best drill team, and, and, but the thing that was interesting to me is, here's ninety-two kids, decked out, uniform, discipline, uh, and I think that's a, a program sometimes that we don't realize the impact of that. I, I know there was one young man that I taught at, at Lister, that if he'd not been in, in ROTC, and, and one of his instructors said, yep, that program turned him from being a little naughty into being a pretty successful human being, who's now a junior at the University of Washington Tacoma. So, the discipline, the accountability, I think in those programs is, is really amazing. The other thing I did back about two weeks ago, there was a reception at the Morano, at, not the Morano, I'm sorry, the Courtyard, the Marriott Courtyard, our CTE ProShare kids at FOS participated in a contest of building gingerbread structures based upon iconic buildings and things in Tacoma, and they won some awards, and they competed with some of the better chefs in town. So, you know, we, we look at what we're doing, and we're doing, you know, we're talking about the graduation rates. Those programs help the graduation rates when we get to there. These ROTC keeps kids in school, ProShare, and things like that, as we move forward, that we are not just focused on graduating kids, we're focused on graduating our kids with skill sets, in which we'll take them either to the college level or to, into the CTE program. So, I think we're, you know, we're going to begin a new year with lots of exciting things, and I do want to comment on, on the graduation rates. We are the only school district in the state that has four high schools that are graduated over ninety percent of their kids last year. And I think that's amazing, if you look at our population, where we are and who we are. So, I just want to wish everyone a safe and happy holidays, and, uh, get our batteries charged up, because we got lots of work to do for the remaining of the year. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Um, I just love Tacoma. I just, seriously, I, I just want to piggyback on Vice President Viall's comments about the students, and consistent, I know we have to close gaps, it has to be, we have to keep moving forward and closing our gaps, as measured by your, our, our standardized test scores, we absolutely have to. But, just the more we can highlight the fabulous hu- human beings that our kids are, and really find ways to, um, not wholly measure, but to, um, lift up the great, like, the confidence that our students come to these board meetings with, and present and speak in front of us, is just really great, and not something that we should take, um, for granted, because it's not every student that looks you in the eye and shakes your hand with confidence and just walks up here with, like, that is a thing that you have to really nurture in kids and help support and make sure that they know is valuable and celebrate it. So, as we continue to move forward in closing our gaps and our standardized test scores and, 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 and closing opportunity gaps on the front end, we also have to keep making sure to put a focus on developing those social emotional skills and those, that self-advocacy and sense of confidence and purpose and determination about their next steps, because those are the things that are going to carry them when the building full of teachers are gone, so...
That's true.
I don't have any additional comments tonight, but I just really want to emphasize that well-rounded piece and really celebrating all aspects of our kids. Um, so, an item number twenty, announcement of future Board meetings, so, Thursday, January eleventh, twenty eighteen, at six PM, we'll meet for a regular business meeting. Thursday, January eighteenth, twenty eighteen, oh, I have to keep saying eighteen now.
I know.
Six PM, we'll re- meet for a study session.
What's the topic?
And that should be...
Good question, I'm not sure.
The topic is to be determined, or to be resurfaced.
To be announced.
To be announced.
The famous TBA.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, executive session, there is none tonight. So, item twenty-two, with that, we are adjourned.
Happy holidays, students and families.
Happy holidays.
Oh, gosh, poor daughter, she's so nervous about this.